Morning, everyone, and welcome to Perth County Council, the sixteenth day of November. I'd like to call our meeting to order if everyone could please follow their head for a moment of reflection. Thank you. With our land acknowledgement, we acknowledge that Perth County is situated on the traditional land of the Onamasha Bay, with a longstanding relationship with the land and water throughout the region. We honor and respect the history, languages, and culture of the diverse indigenous, Matia, and Inuit people who call this territory home. As a county, we have a responsibility for reconciliation and continued stewardship of the land on which we live and live. If you have a curricular interest, you can disclose that now or as the meeting goes along. We have ten items on our consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to pull or have? Oh, Tyler says I need to do that first. Okay, sorry, we need to, uh, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three agenda be approved. Moved by councillor Trinkowski, second by councillor Orr, all in favor. Carry on. Okay, now we'll go to consent agenda. Ten items there. Is there any one, any questions on any of those items, councillor Orr?
Uh, six point three, the social and economic prosperity review.
You'd like that pulled?
I, I'd just like to support it if we could.
Okay, we'll pull that out. Anything else? No? Okay, so councillor receives the consent agenda item six point one to six point ten excluding six point three, and approves the November second, twenty twenty-three council minutes. Moved by councillor Smith, second by councillor McDermott, all in favor. Carry on. Okay, councillor Orr, you just wanted a motion to support?
Yes, I, I, uh, it's has to do with, uh, the AMO policy update. Uh, North Perth has done the resolution, and I do think that's worth supporting county council as well.
Okay, so moved by councillor Orr. Do we have a second here? Uh, councillor Kassenberg, any questions? All in favor? Get ready. Okay, we do have a public meeting this morning, so we will, um, at regular council recess for the purpose of holding the public, planning public meeting at approximately nine oh three. Moved by councillor Agerson, second by councillor McDermott, all in favor. Carry on. Okay, I'd like to call our public meeting to order. If you have, uh, curricular interest, you can disclose that now or as the meeting goes along. Uh, we have a motion to confirm the, uh, agenda, so the planning public meeting, November sixteenth agenda be approved. Moved by councillor Trinkowski, oh, no, councillor Kassenberg, councillor Deputy Warden Fallon. The bad morning. All in favor? First thing, it's so much easier, okay? Anyway, we move to the approval of the minutes. Any questions in any of those minutes? So we have a motion that, uh, council approves the minutes of October five, twenty twenty-three, planning public meeting, OPA two eighteen, two eighteen, Mapleview congregation. Moved by councillor McKenzie, second by councillor Orr, all in favor. Carry on. Okay, we're going to move to our report. We have OPA number two sixteen, The Trident Group Limited, and I believe John is with us this morning. And John's going to give that report, so John, welcome, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Warden, members of council and members of the public. Before you today is official plan amendment number two sixteen. It's located at the Red Star on slides, uh, so that would be just west of Listowel, and south of Perthline eighty-six. Uh, the applicant is Trident Group Limited, and the owner is Connie Evangelow-Bray. Next slide, please. So Perth County Official Plan Amendment number two sixteen has been submitted concurrently with Listowel Ward, Official Plan Amendment number thirty-six. Um, the Perth County Official Plan Amendment, uh, is necessary to re-designate a portion of the site from agriculture and natural resources environment, uh, to serviced urban area. Uh, and to redefine the natural, uh, environment designation limits, uh, that was recommended in the submitted environment impact study. Uh, the applications also recognized an undersized retained lands, uh, through the county OPA with a site-specific policy in the agricultural designation, uh, to permit a minimum lot area of four hectares, um, the existing dwelling accessory structures as well. The second application that I just wanted to touch upon, uh, it's not part of the public meeting, but it is, uh, impairant to the application process, is, uh, Listowel OPA number thirty-six, and that, uh, has, has been submitted to add portions of the site to either residential, uh, the residential designation in the Listowel Ward official plan or the highway commercial designation, uh, in the Listowel Ward official plan. So the residential component, uh, of the proposed development at this time includes two hundred sixteen single detached dwellings, thirty-six townhouse units, four multi-residential blocks comprising of two hundred seventy-seven units, uh, with a grand total of currently five hundred and twenty-nine dwelling units. So I want to get a little bit more into OPA two sixteen as this is the public meeting for that. So, start off, the provincial policy statement states that expansions to settlement boundaries can only be undertaken where there's been a comprehensive review submitted. Uh, the applicants have submitted this comprehensive review completed by N. Barry Lyon Consultants. Uh, she used the Perth County, uh, comprehensive review that was done and approved by county council on November sixth, or sorry, November second. Um, the review utilized data from the comprehensive review, uh, that was based on twenty twenty. New comprehensive review that's been updated, um, which was passed on November second, increased some of the numbers, uh, which I'm going to go into, um, right here, actually. So Watson and Associates has since completed the updated comprehensive review. Um, and the updated conference review identified that Listowel specifically will have a deficit of two hundred and thirty-eight hectares of urban residential land by the year twenty forty-eight. So to put that into a little bit of context, that is about just over two atwoods in size, um, close to six hundred acre farms, uh, that is needed within the Listowel community by twenty forty-eight. This property specifically constitutes nine percent of that, uh, which would be about twenty-two hectares uh, of the urban residential land needs, uh, for the Listowel community. So this number is actually in conjunction with intensification, um, in feeling anticipated within Listowel as well. Uh, so that's something to, to consider as well. This slide here just shows the, the graph that was produced by the comprehensive review, which outlines the two hundred and thirty-eight hectare deficit that Listowel, um, will be seeing. Next slide, please. So OPA two sixteen proposes three changes. The first being to designate, um, the area from agriculture to serviced urban area. The proposal involves the expansion of the Listowel settlement boundary, uh, into lands that are prime agricultural lands. Alternative locations were, um, were, sorry, were considered. Uh, however, prime agricultural land surrounds the Listowel community. As you can see, it's a little bit dark, um, in the slide, in the image to the right, but what this image shows is class one prime agricultural land surrounding Listowel. It's all the same color. It's all prime, uh, it's all class one prime agricultural land. Um, so that was considered for this development specifically. Um, there's no essentially lands within the Listowel community that would be less ideal, uh, say for a lower-class agricultural soils as it's all class one. Uh, so the property is considered a logical area to expand settlement boundary. There is no impact to neighboring livestock operations. Uh, servicing and infrastructure can be orderly extended to the property, and the parcel is not comprised of any specialty crop areas. The subject lands are minutes away from municipal trails and pedestrian connections, shops and services along Mitchell Roads, Mitchell Road South there, um, and as well as schools and residential areas along Binning Street to the north, uh, specifically. The property is considered a logical expansion, uh, of both Twanley Street and Kincaid Street. Uh, as you can see in the red arrows on left, those are the two, um, logical connections to the subdivision to the east, uh, and those are Kincaid and Twanley Street, um, subsequently. The second change that the OPA two sixteen identifies is to designate, uh, some areas from the natural resource environment to serviced urban area. This is specifically considered, uh, because of the environmental effects that he submitted. So essentially, the NRE designations will, uh, formulate, um, will be designated as such as the EIS has recommended. The third change is the site-specific agricultural designation for retained lands. Um, this is essentially to recognize the retained lands as, uh, agricultural and the reduced lot size, uh, that is required in the OPA. Um, so essentially, the agricultural designation will permit a lot area of, of minimum of four hectares. Um, it also will prohibit livestock operations from occurring on that, uh, retained parcel as, uh, it is directly adjacent to settlement area. Next slide, please. So I wanted to just quickly briefly talk about OPA thirty-six as well, just to give everyone, uh, proper context here. So section five of the Listowel Ward Official Plan deals with policies specific to residential development, uh, considering the fact that this subdivision will be designated residential in the Listowel Ward, uh, official plan. We need to look into the residential policies associated with that. So some goals and objectives, objectives include promoting new housing stock, uh, the efficient use of infrastructure and public services, and encouraging a wide, wide range of housing types, uh, including housing for seniors, and of course affordability. Second designation is only in the top right corner of the slide. That is the blue area, the blue square. That is proposed to be designated highway commercial in the Listowel Ward Official Plan through OPA thirty-six. Uh, so lands within this highway commercial designation are typically on larger lots, uh, with lots of highway exposure. Um, parcels typically have good visibility and exposure are intended, uh, for uses that require heavily traveled roads. Uh, Perthline eighty-six is a, is a rather heavily traveled road, so this, uh, was, was fitting for the highway commercial designation. Slide, please. So notice a public meeting for the Listowel Ward Official Plan Amendment, that would be number thirty-six, was circulated on August twenty-ninth. Public meeting occurred, uh, on September eighteenth at North Perth Council. Notice a public meeting for Perth County Official Plan Amendment number two sixteen, which is the one we are discussing today, was circulated on October twenty-seventh. Comments have been received from four residents as well as, uh, multiple agencies, uh, and those comments have been included in the agenda package, uh, for you all. And that is the end of my discussion here today. I do want to quick run through the rest of the slides, just to give a little bit more context of the site. Uh, this is, thank, thank you very much. This is the ELC classifications or land classifications, uh, land type classifications that was submitted during the EIS. I just want to give everyone a little bit of context around that. Uh, there's two areas that would be designated natural resource environment. Um, and this is how the current proposal would overlay on those. Next slide, please. This image was taken, um, on the church property, Listowel Baptist Church. It's looking into the southwest, uh, down the site, gives a little bit more context at, uh, where the site is located and, and how the retained lands would kind of work within that. Next slide, please. This image was taken looking down tall, I believe it's Twanley. It might be Kincaid. Um, it's looking to the east at the subject property, how that connection will occur with the subdivision to the east. Slide, please. And this is, uh, the other roadway, so, um, I can't remember if Twanley's first or second, but, uh, again, looking down at the connection to the new proposed subdivision through the current one to the east. Slide. I think that's it. Perfect. So I can take any questions or we can continue with the public meeting.
Okay, thank you, John. Uh, Caroline Baker's joining us this morning on Zoom, so we'll let Caroline go next. Good morning, Caroline. Welcome to our meeting, and the floor is yours.
Good morning. Uh, thank you, Warden Agson.
We can't hear you.
It's, it's one, yeah, it's just a little bit delayed on our, so you should be able to speak now. We should be able to hear you.
Can you hear me all right?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and I apologize for that minute delay as we switch over on Zoom. I was just saying, good morning, Warden Agson, members of county council. Uh, my name is Caroline Baker from Baker Planning Group, and I'm representing both, uh, the owners and the applicants this morning with respect to official plan amendment two sixteen. Um, if possible, I do have a brief presentation if I can share screen.
Sure.
Thank you. Once that's up, uh, certainly, uh, Mr. Weiss provided, uh, comprehensive and thorough presentation, uh, with respect to the applications, uh, the work that has been completed and public consultation to date, which is going to add a few extra notes, uh, with respect to the proposed, uh, development itself and its components, as well as some of the, uh, technical, uh, studies that have been completed. I think this was up on your screen, uh, a few moments ago. Uh, this is the preliminary development concept for the proposed portion of the site, uh, to be brought into the Listowel, uh, settlement area. Uh, as noted, uh, there is a range and mix of uses, uh, from, uh, single detached dwellings, street townhouse dwellings, uh, townhouses, stack townhouses, uh, and potentially, uh, multi-unit dwellings. Included in this concept, you will see, uh, in orange, there are a series of parks and parquettes, uh, to offer to not only residents on the site, uh, but in the community, uh, and they've been strategically, uh, located, uh, to provide views and vistas to the natural features that are being protected on the site. Uh, you'll also see there's three new vehicular and pedestrian, uh, entrances, two of which align with the existing subdivision to the east, as well as one to line eighty-six. One thing I did want to note, uh, we did here at North Perth, uh, council, uh, through those, uh, public meetings and recommendation meetings, uh, that consideration be given, uh, to providing, uh, further range of uses and densities to minimize, uh, the number of single detached dwellings. I believe this comment, of course, was in light of not only housing affordability and attainability, um, but ensuring that, uh, when primary agricultural land, uh, is removed for the purposes of urban uses, it's done so in an efficient and effective way. And certainly, the owner, uh, has heard those comments and is looking to the next stages to make some of those changes, uh, should this official plan amendment be approved and they can move forward with a subdivision application. Uh, as noted, uh, one of the fundamental studies in looking at a boundary expansion is market, uh, demand analysis as it relates to provincial policy. Certainly, it was the intent of the project team and working with county planning staff, uh, to ensure that this application was in line, uh, with the county's comprehensive official plan review, uh, ensuring that the findings from the Watson study, uh, were incorporated and that the county's official plan, uh, team, uh, was involved with this application. Uh, certainly, as noted, uh, if approved, uh, this boundary expansion would represent around nine percent of what is forecasted to be required, uh, in Listowel. And through the studies, it was determined that this site is strategically located, uh, both from physical and social infrastructure to accommodate, uh, this growth. And certainly, as I'm sure we're all aware, as, uh, land supply has become a challenge, uh, this can certainly impact, uh, housing affordability. Through this market demand analysis, it was also concluded that in Perth County, uh, two very distinct, uh, resident groups, uh, are certainly, uh, going to grow in their need for housing. Uh, one is an aging population and the need to shift to a broader housing choice to accommodate, uh, their needs as they want to age in the community, but also to ensure there's housing options for young families, uh, whether they're grew up in Perth County or looking to move to Perth County, that they have those, those options. I think as noted, there was a number of studies. Just want to highlight, of course, there's environmental impact study. Uh, servicing, uh, was completed along with traffic, archaeological, hydrogeological, I can think how many names we can go through here, aggregate impact assessment, and of course, minimum distance separation to ensure long-term agricultural protection. So I just wanted to conclude there, uh, certainly supportive of the recommendations of both, uh, county staff and the recommendation from North Perth, uh, council that this application is in line with the work that's being completed as part of the comprehensive review, of course, to bring lands online, uh, to meet that demand, uh, for more housing in the community that can be appropriately serviced and accessed. So that's the end of my presentation. I can stop sharing screen. And certainly, if there's any questions of council or members of the public, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Caroline. Uh, we do have a couple of people registered that wish to speak this morning, and the first one is Anne Alden. So Anne, if you would like to, you can stay there, John. If you'd like to come up and sit beside, uh, John, and just tell us your name and where you're from and...
Perfect, thank you. Good morning, councillors, and good morning, uh, this is Egg, Eggards, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your name. It's Agus, thank you. Um, my name is Anne Alden. I recently moved to Listowel this past August. I live at twenty-nine Winchester Crescent, and my property, property overlooks the, uh, said property that you're, we're talking about today. Um, my property is right in the corner of, uh, the church property and, um, the sugar bush that backs onto this property. Uh, I understand today is to determine the plan amendment, but I'm here to voice my concerns regarding the mixed-use development that is being proposed, and I'm strongly opposed to the placement of an apartment building right behind our home. Um, first, you can imagine my surprise that within two weeks of moving to Listowel, um, I find out that there's this, uh, this project going on, the development that I had no idea was going on behind us as we had just purchased on the town line of Listowel onto farmland, natural environment. I, I didn't think that that would be changing immediately, but, uh, as we, uh, have found out from neighbors, um, that this was going on, uh, we have not been registered with the town of Listowel yet to, in, in order for us to get any of the letters that were coming out. So I'm a little behind in, in what was going on on this, in, in, in terms of the meetings that were being held. So I'm sort of catching, on catch-up right now. Um, but I did want to, to voice my opinion that after reviewing the letters sent to my neighbors, I saw the developer had row housing and apartment buildings directly behind our homes. Um, the location of the said apartment that I'm opposed to stands alone and doesn't blend with the current residential, uh, uh, settings. Uh, I can't, uh, the location, yeah, I can't imagine that anyone would think it's okay that you have all of these beautiful, single detached homes, um, with a great big apartment building set in right behind it. Um, so that's, that's my main concern here. Uh, in addition to paying the premiums that these lots that back onto the farmland, anywhere between twenty and thirty thousand dollars people paid, um, an apartment building being put right behind you isn't something that somebody would pay a premium for. Uh, my property and others beside me have an easement at back of our properties. It's a swale for water runoff and measures four meters from our property line. It stops us from ever building anything permanent in our rear yard, like a fence, uh, trees even, or a shed. Our backyards are bare, but we had the privacy of farmland, and that was worth it to us. None of us wanted an easement, and some had no idea there would be an easement, but ended up with one. We all understand that water management is essential, uh, but we rely on city council and the planning department to adhere to the bylaws that will help blend neighborhoods and to take into consideration our lack of privacy due to the easement. Um, our neighborhood had, also has a covenant. It has very detailed rules to maintain the integrity of our neighborhood. The subdivision of Westwood consists of mainly single-family bungalows that are lovely. The thought of living behind an apartment building is not something I would ever do, and I would never have expected that would ever happen in our neighborhood. The thought of trying to sell a home with an apartment behind, it would be difficult at best, leaving our largest assets at risk and highly discounted. I ask that everyone consider for a moment how you would feel if you saw a plan that an apartment building was going up right behind your home. I'm sure you would feel sick to your stomachs as I do. My neighborhood is still in the finishing stages of construction, so it's a little raw to think of more constructions for year to come. Uh, I understand the city is planning for growth. However, I ask that some consideration be given to existing resident, residents who have worked hard to, uh, own a nice home. I, I also would like to remind the developer and councillor of the bylaws, um, that say under residential patterning in order to make my point. First, that adjoining properties, um, be appropriately landscaped, buffered, and screened to maintain or enhance the visual amenities of the development rail, commercial, industrial, or different types of existing residential uses. Uh, plant, planting an apartment building behind these homes is not, in my opinion, is unreasonable and not appropriate. Secondly, that semi-duplex dwellings developments does not fragment or change the character of established residents in certain neighborhoods. Again, placing single detached homes, um, the single detached home, when existing single detached homes would be appropriate, given you are in the early planning stages, which I would say to Mister, Mister, uh, is it John? Sorry, John, that, um, if, in, in what the plan is showing here, it has row houses right behind my house. It has that great big apartment building there, um, but you have all the single detached homes that sort of on the other side of the neighborhood, where it's not affecting anybody who is currently living there. Um, the fourth, the third was the fourplex row townhouses and apartments shall be, uh, encouraged in groups or clusters rather than in scattered form. Um, here I'm referring to that one apartment on its own, uh, behind our homes that will stick out like a sore thumb and doesn't blend in with the development that we live in. Uh, we can see that we have apartments to the right off of eighty-six and apartments over to the left on the river. Um, that one apartment building there could easily, uh, be clustered with either of those two apartment dwellings and leave the, uh, you know, the, the, where the apartment is now, uh, we could put parkland there because I noticed that all of the parkland seems to be to the, the left of the division with nothing to the right. Um, if we extended the church parking lot, or sorry, not church parking lot, church property, um, where that apartment building is, they could still be building, um, single detached homes on Kincaid that would be uh, blending with, with our neighborhood as well. Uh, but that one apartment building there on its own is, is, it's literally going to shadow over our properties, um, where we have absolutely no way of, uh, privacy with no fences, no trees, uh, no nothing. We're just sort of sitting ducks there. So I'm asking that the developer reconsider their initial draft of, uh, proposed development and work with the city to abide by the bylaws, which also, considering the residents of Listowel involved in the serious issue with our, personally with our properties. The designated parkland, uh, oh, I'm sorry, I discuss it. My neighbors and I all feel sick that we have purchased new homes that could potentially have an apartment building built in our backyards. Our easements deny us the privacy that a lot with a fence would provide. Um, I hope to get the support of council to be making suggestions that will follow such bylaws in terms of integrating the two developments. Um, regarding the residential service, servicing of water sewage, I understand that, um, Kincaid would have to be torn up as it's, uh, the water sewage isn't large enough to satisfy, um, this new development, and I'm just wondering if council is, is satisfied with that and what the timeline might be where Kincaid would be torn up. Um, because of course, we just moved in, we don't even have our final paving on our roads, and now we're talking about possibly, um, redoing all of the water sewage. And if that's something that possibly could be taken care of coming off of eighty-six to run the water sewage from there, um, that would stop our neighborhood from being torn up after literally not even being finished yet. Um, I hope that the developer would, um, think about moving that apartment building as well. Um, as you, uh, uh, if this proposal goes through today and passed by council, um, then they would be going ahead with probably furtherance to something planned like this. And, uh, I would hope that they would, uh, think about that apartment building and the, uh, direct impact it would have on the residents, uh, that are currently living there. So this completes my comments, and I thank you for your time.
Okay, any questions from council? Councillor McDermott?
Well, yeah, that easement that you have on there.
Yes.
Uh, when you bought your property, would you not have been... When you bought your property, would you not have been told about that?
I was told about it. I am a new buyer there, so I've only been there for two and a half months now. But I, in speaking with my neighbors, there were some of them that when they purchased their new home, were not aware of the easement until the grounds have been graded and it's, and then it's like, here's your, here's your home, let's buy this, and by the way, you have an easement in your backyard.
But that is part of the stormwater management problem?
I don't, I'm not sure exactly where our runoff goes. We don't, there are easements on the sugar bush side of that property where the water runs down, it goes into the stormwater, it comes back, it goes under the whole community and over to a far side of, so there's a lot of water running underneath the community. I believe our runoff just goes to the sort of the wetlands into the sugar bush and onto the church property.
But I'm confused at why at that easement, it's not part of the stormwater management ones or the stormwater, why you couldn't put a fence or a tree?
Could be a service. Sorry.
Maybe Caroline can answer that.
Through the warden, so certainly I did not work for the developer of that subdivision or the builder, so this is just generic comments. I wasn't involved in that. Typically, if there are easements to the rear of a property, that's included on title for when you purchase the property. So when you pull, they're registered by a property, it'll show you the lot or block in the subdivision and any parts easements that are registered on title. The restriction for fences, and again, I'm just supposing because I wasn't involved, is that the fences are between the dwelling units. So if you wanted to put a fence from your back wall to your back property to give you privacy to your neighbors, that would cut right through a swale that's used for stormwater management. But maybe just while I have a quick moment, what I would say is we'll certainly, I've heard your comments. The application this morning is the boundary expansion, which is bringing the lands into the boundary. There will be subsequent draft plan of subdivision and zone change applications. Certainly were a consideration, as you noted, related to transition of residential uses. Buffering and privacy will be evaluated and considered. So I just wanted to add that, add that note there. But again, I didn't work on your property subdivision specifically, so I'm just supposing based on other examples.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? If not, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you so much.
And we also have Alan Clemmons registered to speak.
Morning Warden, morning councillors. My name's Alan Clemmons. I live two doors down from Anne at thirty-three Winchester. And I fortunately back right on to where that apartment building would sit, would be in my backyard. I am aware of the easement as well, just to give you a little bit more background of that. When I purchased the property from our builder, said, here, you have a beautiful lot backs onto farmland, blah, 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 blah. I wasn't aware of the easement until the day of closing, when that was presented with the deed. There's your subdivision agreement, here's your easement. Oh, very good. So easement basically says no permanent structures, nothing that's non-removable. In other words, the city in easement means that city or town or the county has access to your property. I'm sure that it's a drainage area, it's a swale that runs through there. Has a lot of water to drain off. If it won't, then somebody's basement's going to get flooded. So no, we're not allowed to build any permanent structure on that easement. Therefore, a tree is a permanent structure, so is a fence, so is a garden shed. So we've already lost about fifteen feet of our fifteen, pardon me, fourteen meters of our backyards are actually not usable to us for permanent structures. That's okay. We can live with that because we have parkland, we have open space behind us. All of that, you know, said, be done. I'm just diddooing what she was saying, just explaining that we were not formed of the easement when we purchased the property. We were only formed of it when we were handed the deeds. Oh, by the way, you have an easement. We're not the only property in the subdivision that that happened to, and I know it's a new development. I don't know whether it was the builder or the person who was selling the lots to the builder wasn't informing them properly that there was an easement on the property when they got it. So my builder wasn't aware of the easement until he got the actual survey and the deed for the property too. Developer says, here's a whole bunch of lots, do you want to buy fifty of them? Sure. There we go. So here we go. So all of this has come forward afterwards, but that's beside the point. I think a couple of issues that I'll just, without me covering everything that Anne has already talked about, I'll just add a few of the things that I'm concerned about. When I looked at that draft plan, I thought I spent a lot of time reading in the last, Listowel Ward Plan and the official Perth County Plan and the Watson thing that they did. And I read there, I was reading about, what, what's this? So we're looking about taking agricultural land and putting it into residential. And to get that approved, the developer has to show that, boy, we're going to have all of these seven hundred or five hundred some odd units in this, on this piece of property. However, if you really think about it realistically, that's not what's going to happen. Because if you look at, if you read into, into Perth County's own plan, which they took their own information from Watson, it says, over the long term, i.e. in the plus ten to fifteen years, the average rate of annual housing development is it is anticipated to gradually slow. Next line in that says, future housing growth is anticipated to be dominated by low-density housing. That's your plan. That's Perth County's plan. However, we've got a subdivision here that's got about fifty percent of it is high-density housing, which does not, is nothing to do with the town of Listowel or the municipality of Listowel. If you look at Listowel's makeup today, about five percent of Listowel is high-density housing, not fifty percent. So if you want to build a subdivision that meets the needs of the town of Listowel, that's not it. I do agree, we need, we need apartment buildings and we need them, but we need them strategically placed. We don't need high-density housing, because those aren't the people that are moving to Listowel. I live there. I moved to Listowel, I moved back to Listowel, I was born and raised there. I moved back to Listowel because of this community where I could buy a single-family homes on a decent-sized lot for a decent amount of dollars. That's why people move to Listowel. There's no place to work in Listowel. You guys can all see where they're going to, we deal with all these houses, but I don't know where these people are going to work. They're going to be, Highway eighty-six is already the most dangerous piece of stretch of highway in Perth County that I can find. We don't need any more people driving up and down that highway going to Waterloo to work. So until you decide you're going to put some industry in Listowel for the people to work, then we might need some housing. I'm not saying we don't need this development. I agree, we need more housing. We don't need high-density housing, at least not fifty percent of it is high-density. And I understand why they've done that. I mean, we have one person telling us who's done a study that says we need high-density housing, and then we have another one says we don't need high-density housing. So who do we believe? So I guess my other concern is, is I want to make sure that the county knows, and maybe even our representatives from the, from North Perth know, that the townships and the counties and the towns are not very good at communicating with, with the public. I woke up one morning and there's someone digging a hole in my front yard to plant a tree. I had no idea who he was and where he was from. Because I was not informed that they were coming. I understand, I get a tree, I got a new house. I'd love to get a tree. I had no say what tree I got. I had no say what day it was going to be planted. I didn't even know they were coming until I heard the machine digging a hole in my front yard. It put sidewalks in our neighborhood, finally, after several months that the sidewalks weren't there, they dug up everybody's lawns, so it put the sidewalks in that the developer was responsible to put in and left big gaping hole, some of them two and a half to three feet deep, someone would have broken a leg off. We phoned the city and the town day after day after day, person after person after person phoned, we need to get this fixed before somebody hurts themselves. It stayed like that. No one from the city called me back. It stayed like that from October until May before it was fixed. And that's because nobody was there to police what was going on. We need to make sure that if a developer is going to do a development and that the builders are going to build, that someone is there to make sure that they follow the regulations. I've been there for three years. My street has been cleaned once in three years. So would you like to drive around your neighborhood in mud that deep, day after day after day? I understand I live in a construction zone, but somebody has to clean the streets. I know every subdivision agreement says the streets must be cleaned, but who polices that? So if I phoned the town and say the street's not clean, and he doesn't phone me back, now what do I do? I don't have a phone number for the developer. I don't know who he is. All I'm saying is, it's okay to approve development. But this side of the council and your staff must make sure that they do their job as well, and that's all I ask. Is that they look at, you guys are our elected officials, you have to look after us. When we have a problem, we have to get back to us. I had a long chat with, the only way I ever got any action was I actually had to phone a councillor and talk to him on his cell phone while he was driving around the field on his tractor doing his business. I talked to him for two hours. Great conversation. He agreed with me. Our biggest problem is, is we can't get our staff to phone people back and to follow up on stuff. There's all kinds of issues in this town that people say, I got a problem, but nobody phones me back. If I, if I had my cell phone here, it's over there, I can tell you and show you how many times I phoned the public works guy in the town of Listowel to get him to call me to say I got a problem. They're not fixing the sidewalk, nobody calls you back. All I'm saying is, if you want to make a subdivision, we want to do development, that's wonderful. I don't have any problem with it.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off.
Yeah.
Because this is about zoning a piece of property.
Yes. So I understand that, and I, that's, I am, I am finished. I don't want, I don't want to carry things on. I'm just saying is, is that we want to do a development, make sure this is done properly. That's all. End of conversation.
Hey, any questions from members of council? Nope. Okay. Thank you for your hesitation. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a presentation? Nope. Okay. Any other business? Any announcements? Okay, so the planning public meeting will be adjourned at nine forty-one AM. Moved by Councillor Agherson, second by Councillor McDermott. All in favor? Carry. Okay, we're going to go back into regular council, and to do that, we have a motion that we read regular council at nine forty-two. Moved by Councillor Smith, second by Councillor Duncan. All in favor? Carry. Okay, so the first report that we have is our CAO, County Apparent Emergency Management Program. And Rick is here this morning with us, so Rick, I'm ready. And welcome to council, and the floor is yours.
Morning, morning, members of council. Thank you for having me today. Through you, Warden, the purpose of my my presence here today is to, is to bring to you the report on the updates on the emergency management program. Exciting ones, I might add. Specifically, the adoption or the creation of the new emergency response plan for the county. So that's why we're here today. Just a couple, a little bit of background, two thousand twenty-two, seen a modernization review of the emergency management program, which included the county, the four lower tiers, the city of Stratford, and the town of St. Mary's. There are a lot of observations and a lot of notations in that report that was brought to council in January two thousand twenty-three, I believe. And what we did as a group was took that report and started looking at improvements and continuous updates to the program. We really used that to sort of launch sort of this rendition of the program. So one of the four major recommendations that came out of that, two we're going to focus on today, two were low-hanging fruit, which were easily done, that being the the document sharing platform, which was easy, easily done, and the CEMC position taking care of the program for the county itself. So those ones were already in progress when the report was launched, so we'll now focus on those. The two we will focus on is the training one and the emergency response plan. They are correlated, I'll include the two. The report spoke to training about getting everybody on the the various emergency control groups on consistent levels of training. This is something that was recognized by the group, by the consultants. So we took that and developed a training program using the provincial incident management system, which was adopted and is reflected in this plan as well. Being a provincial trainer, it's easier for me to go to municipalities to work with the groups on their schedules and to help them implement this training within their groups. So we have done that. To date, we've trained up, or I've trained up roughly forty-six people, which represents ninety-five percent of the primary members of the emergency control groups across the five, across the five groups. Significant investment in time by those groups, that's kudos to them. January two thousand twenty-four will soon be pick up the rest that I have not trained and alternates that have been assigned. So training has been a big initiative, and that rolls into the emergency response plan. And I bring that to you today for, pardon me, adoption and approval. The emergency response plan is required by the, by the, by the act. And basically, every municipality must have one. Back in the day, you'd have one for municipality, which is fine. That's, that's, it's, it's still okay to do that. But when you speak to the folks in Emergency Management Ontario, there are four hundred forty-four municipalities, meaning four hundred forty-four individual plans that need to be reviewed and updated. And when you're talking about a tiered system with upper and lower tiers, the lower tiers are, they're all basically copying and pasting each other. So when you look at the plans, it makes sense to have what's called the unified plan. And the minister, EMO Minister and the EMO's office supports that notion. We've done that here today. So our plan now is a unified plan encompassing of the county and the four lower tiers. It's really a framework document. It talks about processes, roles, responsibilities in general. We get into the weeds with specific municipal appendices, which are not on the public side, because that includes, you know, what could be confidential information, phone numbers, specific processes that are not for public consumption. The plan itself is the public consumption document. It will be posted en masse, but it really is a framework document that goes through the program, how we will respond and roles and responsibilities for everybody in the EOC, including the policy group, which is senior elected officials, and how we function that way. This was not an easy process, but it was a very collaborative one. I do want to recognize the amount of work that was done by the control groups and municipalities. They contributed to this to a large degree. This wasn't done just by myself. A lot of consultation, a lot of meetings. The alternate CEMCs and the CAOs took, played a big part in getting where we are today. So a big amount of collaboration, which I think is exciting and it's impressive, actually. So again, this program, the plan itself, sorry, will be a unified plan across the county. Between now and, I believe it's December fifth, I'll be going to each of the councils and getting it adopted by those groups as well. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Councillor McDermott?
Oh yeah, on page eighty-six.
Okay.
Seven point three, public health emergencies.
Yes.
I think the fourth bullet and the sixth bullet point there, the coordinate vaccine management. They're a repetition. At the same bullet point.
Oh, for sure.
On page eighty-seven. Seven point three, point three. I was just wondering, about public health orders, is that including private residents?
I will have to get back to you, confirm that. I did consult, so in the development of this plan, I consulted public health. And I, I'd asked them to update the section of the plan. So I can reach out to them to ask that question.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then on ninety-one.
Yep.
It's eight point six point one. Under CEO, the ninth bullet point is, just give me a second.
Providing advice.
Yeah, that's someone providing advice to the CE CG on legal and financial matters. It's just the word legal in there.
Yeah, to your point, the financial matters is, there are two separate functions there, so I can look to reword that bullet as well.
Yeah, I just, if I was that person, I'm not really sure I'd want.
We're all experts to some degree. No, we can look at that as well. This plan is, as I said, done, but there's some minor revisions and tweaks specifically to the bylaws and stuff, so this is a great time to, to get up these, these little things.
And on page ninety-six, eight point eight point one, the EOC Director. The seventh bullet point was citizen inquiry supervisor. If you just elaborate on that a little bit, please.
Yeah, so in larger-scale emergencies, you may want to assign somebody to man, which traditionally a call center or a phone that people can be directed to. In our municipalities, you can think of two-one-one. Or you can assign that role to somebody as opposed to having to call into the municipal offices or to call the communication staff or to call members of council. You'll want to assign, sometimes you want to assign to be specific to that role, and that will be the citizen inquiry line to make sure they can field those calls. And from an EOC perspective, we would give them information from a tool, give them information relay so we can, to some degree, relay some of those questions to the citizens who might be contacting the regarding members.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Seeing no questions, we have a motion that council receives report entitled the Emergency Management Program, and that council approves the new County Emergent Response Plan ERP, and that council repounds bylaw thirty-six eighty-seven dash twenty eighteen and thirty-nine fifty dash twenty twenty-three, and that council adopt the Emergency Management Program and Emergence Response Plan. Moved by Councillor Agherson, second by Councillor Orr. All those in favor? Carry. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to planning services, and we have OPA number thirty-six, and John is going to. Okay, now we'll move on to planning services and we have O P A number thirty six and John is going to join us again.
Thank you, Warden and council. Um, you know, perhaps it'd be best to loop these two together. Um, but essentially, the. First County Plan Department is recommending approval for Listwell O P A number thirty six. Uh, and Perth County Official Plan Amendment number two sixteen, just want to make sure that is understood. Um, that what we are approving here is Listwell, uh, settlement boundary expansion. Uh, any sort of further development of these parcels will require a planned subdivision as well as zoning by law amendments. Um, densities, great questions, all brought up by members of the public. Um, those questions are best suited to be answered during the plan subdivision phase. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for members of council? Councilor Kasseberg?
Sort of a tactical question, I suppose, that that may bear here. Um, certainly the List Ward official plan talks about the importance of affordability of housing. Twenty percent target for the entirety of Listwell. In terms of the the boundaries. And I'm trying to figure out as an elected official. At what point in the process of land development does a counselor bring voice? And vote to the issue of affordability and and it's being complied with. In the process. So I'm not sure whether, because it's in the official plan of List Award. This is the point that we say there must be some kind of covenant that says twenty percent. Whether that's at the zoning bylaw stage or the kind of subdivision stage. I'm a little confused about where we sit, but I'd like to know the answer on that so that I can determine how I vote at the appropriate points.
Absolutely. Through you, um, through your warden. But I don't think when when we're applying specific policies, we need to. Do so at different stages of the development process. That can be a very confusing. Um, sort of iterative process. So for this sub, this circumstance here, we need to look at the official plan. Policies regarding settlement boundary expansion, because they have not proposed anything specific for the subdivision. Any sort of development on the residential designations in the Listwell official plan. Needs to fold policies from the residential designation policies in the Listwell board official plan. One of those policies, twenty percent of course. Uh, section that you reference. Um, this specific policy would be best, uh, addressed through the plan subdivision phase. The developers have identified that they will be working towards. Uh, trying to obtain at least twenty percent of their development, uh, as being affordable. So they're working on that, um, for their plan subdivision submission. So that's something that we should all look forward to, uh, receiving. Uh, that being said, that twenty percent, uh, affordable policy is intended to be more of a blanket, um, policy. It unfortunately cannot be used to specify. Um, a specific development obtains it. It sent essentially states that. The goals of Listwell is to obtain twenty percent affordability across the board. Um, so working well with the developer to, um, reach those. Targets and goals for this specific development. Um, and we've had fruitful conversations and, um. We're we're looking to see that in their plan subdivision submission.
Well. Both of us to the homeowners, I understand there. Discuss. But then began your first report, you said Listwell area was going to need another six hundred acres of farm and just for residential. And then you were going through this and the amount of. Dance the endless. That's my personal opinion. You're not, it's not near dense enough. And that's just my personal opinion. Like, I struggle to support that when you've got two hundred and seventeen single family, a few townhouses and a couple of. I struggle to support that. Um. And and I realize it's everybody's dream that. Where who's working to buy a single family residential property, but those days have long gone past, unfortunately. And my last comment is when you define affordability. Let me know. Because I'm not sure that you can build anything right now. Affordable. And I've said this before and I'm saying it again now, there's no such thing as affordable right now to the average working.
Hey, anyone else? Councilor Duncan?
Thank you, through you, Warden.
Just wait a minute. Has to wait for the thing to catch you. Try it now.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, thank you through you, Warden. Um, I'm gonna echo. Counselor Aegison's comments. I made these comments at the North Perth meeting. Um. When we justify taking agricultural land out of production, because all we have is class one agricultural land. My thoughts are we need to make the most efficient use of that land as possible, because. We're not making any more agricultural land. So to sacrifice it to build houses on, I want to make sure that the density is as high as possible. And. When you're looking at two hundred and seventeen singles out of that whole development. I I don't think it's anywhere near high enough. Now, planning has told me that the time to look at that is plan a subdivision. But I just want everyone to to know that my thoughts on this are what they are. And when the plan of subdivision comes, I'm gonna be very adamant. That this is built as densely as possible if we're going to sacrifice this agricultural land. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Just.
Councilor. It's more of a, thank you, Warden, through you. It's more of a comment. Um, than a question, but this goes back to the comment I made at the previous meeting about. The unintended consequences of our success. And. This this is a case in point. So I agree with. Uh, Counselor Duncan and Counselor Aegison comments at well as well. About the densification that comes to plan a subdivision. I'm in favor of the concept that we do need more housing. Because employers in. Perth County have said they need more housing. For existing workers. Um, that are already situated in existing. Businesses, industries in the area. But additional housing also needed to draw in. Future development, i.e. future industrial development. Someone, the member of the public asked, where where are these jobs? Well, it's a chicken and egg thing. The employer won't come in unless. The county or the local municipality, in this case, North Perth, can demonstrate, yes, we have housing available. As part of the suite of needs that that employers' workers will need when they relocate here. So I'm in favor of the concept of more land, but. Also mindful, and I mentioned this at the last meeting as well, we have to manage that. That, uh, land wisely, going back to the previous counselor's, um, comments and concerns.
Okay, you have some very just one more sort of area question for perhaps from Mr. Vice, if I might, um. Uh, this proposed, uh, area is immediately adjacent to Listwell Baptist Church. Which has a strip of land that runs behind it and behind its current parking lot. Um, I'm 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 not sure. That that land will be easily accessible in the future, except through the driveway and parking lot of the Listwell Baptist Church. I think in in previous discussions about this proposition, there was a sense that the land was actually a narrow strip, but I actually went out to that. Bot sat in the the parking lot and walked and looked, and it's actually a pretty wide strip. It's certainly wide enough, uh. For some housing development, should that ever be desired in that area, at least in parts. So I'm wondering if. Um, in considering this, we're doing anything. That sort of gives it sort of creates a lot of complexity to the potential use, future use of the land behind that, which currently, as I understand it. Over by that which.
Yeah, through you, Warden. That's a great comment. Um, came up at North Perth Council as well, so it's great to be thinking. In the future regarding these properties. That specific property is not a part of this, um, some of boundary expansion. Uh, however, if if discussions are warranted, uh, for in the future, you know, the county is currently going through an official plan amendment. Perhaps that would be, um, an opportunity to discuss that property. Um, we're talking about what was applied for here. Um, that being said. Um, you know, your your comments are are great to make. Um. It is a large property. I do believe it is encumbered by, um, a large septic system at the moment. And I'm not too sure how it will be municipally serviced in the future, that specific Listwell Baptist property. Um. But those, these are all things that we need to consider, um, when discussing that.
Okay, anyone else? I just have one comment. So this morning, what we're doing is we're taking land from agriculture into. The boundary. Maybe if you could sit down with our applicants here or the people that spoke and explain the process there. I'm getting from them, they're more concerned about that apartment building and what how it's going to be designed and everything else. So just to put their minds at ease, can you sit down with the the people that are here today and explain the process from here on? Because what we're doing is taking the land from one zone to another. Councilor Aegison?
I would prefer with what the word you said. Because a lot of the comments made were directed at servicing, but things that I could have no part of this process here today.
Yeah.
That's more you sort of pulling up. And Kasseberg or one of the councils to say, we got a problem here. I bet it's nothing to do with the county council. You know, and I'd say that, but that's God's honest truth.
Through you, through you, Warden. Um, I did have some conversation. I'd be happy to have a conversation again. Um, I had advised them that if they had concerns, that, um, capturing those early in the process would be beneficial as well.
Okay, anyone else? Questions, comments? If not, then we have a motion that council receives the Listwell O P A number thirty six. Trident Group Limited, six one seven five, Perth County Line eighty six, reports submitted by Baker Planning Group. On behalf of Trident Group Limited and that council approves the official plan amendment number thirty six. To the Listwell Official Plan affecting lands described as lots twenty six, or excuse me, twenty seven and twenty eight concession one Elmer Ward. Municipality of North Perth. Moved by Deputy Warden Kellam, second by. Council McDermott. Any more questions? All in favor? Carry. Okay, and the next report is O P A number two sixteen. John?
I just want to echo the the items that I've said before, uh, and be happy to answer any further questions.
Hey, any questions for John? Seeing no questions, we have a motion that council receives the O P A number two sixteen Trident Group Limited, six one seven five, Perth County Line. Eighty six reports submitted by Baker Planning Group on behalf of Trident Group Limited and that council approves the official plan amendment. Two sixteen to the county of Perth Official Plan affecting lands described as lots twenty seven and twenty eight concession one Elmer Ward. Municipality of North Perth. Moved by Counselor Smith, second by Deputy Warden Kellam. All those in favor? Carry. Okay, thanks, John. We're going to move to corporate services now, and the first item is the September twenty three forestry inspector's report. Tyler?
Perfect. Through the Warren, uh, for council is the September twenty three, uh, forestry inspectors report prepared by Marvin Smith, our forestry inspector. Uh, in the month, uh, Marvin completed eight inspections in response of a notice of submission of an, uh, notice of ten. One inspection in response to a request from a landowner and two from complaints. Is there any questions? I'd be happy to pass this on to Marvin.
Hey, any questions for Tyler? Seeing no question, we have a motion that council receives the September twenty three forest three inspectors report for. Moved by Counselor Duncan, second by Counselor Orr. All those in favor? Carry.
Miss, that's a good question.
Sure, when somebody sends in a complaint regarding tree practice, it'd have to be signed.
So through the Warren, uh, the information goes to Marvin. Uh, it's could be a verbal complaint. He follows up on that.
Did not be signed?
Again, through the Warren, if there's any information that has to go leading to prosecution, we're gonna go ahead and and get them to actually fill out a formal complaint. Uh, however, however, if it's just a general kind of a complaint, uh, you'll do an inspection follow up.
Okay, uh, next item is black ash moratorium.
That as well.
So through the Warden, uh, at the regular council meeting of September seventh, twenty twenty three, council passed a resolution directing staff to prepare a report. Regarding the moratorium on the protection of black ash, um, which was ending and its impact on the forest conservation by law. Uh, January twenty five, just for some historical information of twenty twenty two, Ontario Regulation three twenty two was created under the Endangered Species Act of two thousand and seven. This regulation stipulated that despite the amendments, uh, to Ontario Regulation. Two hundred and thirty dash oh eight, uh, species at risk in our Ontario list, listing black ashes and endangered species. It did not apply for the period of time, uh, from January twenty sixth, twenty twenty two. Until January twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. So during this time of the moratorium, black ash, uh, by the Endangered Species Act two thousand and seven, it was actually protected by our bylaw number three eight three six, twenty twenty one, before street conservation by law. After consultation with Marvin Smith, our forestry bylaw enforcement officer. Uh, it was determined that the designation of black ash as an endangered species will take effect on January twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. Upon that reclassification of black ash as endangered species, it will no longer be required, uh, to list black ash in our bylaw. As it'll be enforced by the province. So attached to this report is the amending bylaw that includes the removal of black ash. Um, and it will also be presented in the bylaw section at this meeting later on. Uh, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take those now.
Hey, questions? Counselor Duncan?
Yeah, I'm just wondering. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Through your warden, I'm just wondering. How will this affect? Um. The filing of a notice of intent now? Because I'm sure there's going to be some prescription from the province to be able to protect any black ash that are in a woodlot. While a logging operation takes place. So is Marvin, is Marvin going to be involved in more? Inspections previous to logging operations taking place after a notice of intent is filed or? How will we work that?
So through the Warren, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have a conversation with Marvin with respect to following up with the notice of intents. Anything that is black ash related. Uh, should be transferred to the province, uh, for their inspection purposes, um, and compliance on that specific tree. Um. Outside of that, our normal notice of intent process will follow through, but specific to black ash, as it is, uh, being enforced by the province. Um, anything that comes through us, if we have to transfer that to the province, we go through Marvin.
Hey.
Thank you.
Councilor.
So thank you, Warden, through you. So following up on. Counselor Duncan's question, I guess, who at the province would look after that? Part of the responsibility. And. Are their rules or criteria compatible with the criteria that the tree inspector would. I'm I'm concerned about it getting complicated when you've got. Two different people and two sets of criteria judging the same situation and. Process goes sideways.
So through the Warren, um, completely understandable, and I don't want to necessarily speak on the enforcement measures of the province. I'm not completely, uh, aware of exactly what they do. Um, however, this goes with anything else that's part of the Endangered Species Act that they'd already be enforcing. Um, so my understanding is that if anything does come forward with respect to black ash, we'll transfer off to them. They'll go through whatever their enforcement process is. Uh, my hope is with anything that goes between. Uh, municipal and provincial level that there's communication on the enforcement measures.
Okay, Counselor Aegis.
Pardon my stupidity, but. Did the Emerald Ash or? Clean up on black ash as well as just regular ash, or was that? You didn't like the taste of black ash or how's that work?
So through the Warren, uh, I can follow up with Marvin specific to that question. Um, again, this was put in place to ensure that there was growth that would end up happening. Um, again, this affects a lot more than the northern municipalities in our province. So that's why that actual, uh, resolution or, uh. Notice motion came forward, uh, back for September seventh, but I can follow up, uh, on the infestation of of Emerald Ash with respect to black ash trees as well.
I just, the reason I asked that question, it was like I had a lot of ash trees on the farm, you know, around the buildings and. Question whatnot, and there is not one that has survived. I had a couple of that. Oh, God, that one's gonna make it. This year. Burt off the leaves and did as a darn old no time. But there can't be many ash trees left, period. Like, there can't be many ash trees left, period.
We have one that's got maybe one or two little branches still alive.
Yeah, well, gone, sure thing.
Yes, I think so too, unfortunately. Anyone else? Questions? If not, then we have a motion that council receives a black ash moratorium report and that council approves the removal of black ash. From bylaw number three eight three six dash twenty twenty one forestry conservation by law. Move on to secondary, moved by. Counselor Kassenberg, second by Counselor Orr. All in favor? Carried. Okay, now we're going to go to quarter three variance and year end projections, and Corey's going to join us on screen this morning. Oh, there we are. Morning, Corey. The floor is yours.
Just waiting for that time delay, hopefully you can hear me.
Yep, we can.
Uh, thank you, warden and council. Um. The report in front of you is the Q three variance and year and projection uh financial results. Um, to highlight within the reports, uh, the operations are projected to be about two hundred and sixty four thousand dollars uh deficit by the end of twenty twenty three. Uh, and is again, assuming all shared services are coming on budget. And to highlight in the operations side of things, the deficit areas are specific to um the tile drainage. As John has alluded to previously, as well as uh winter maintenance. And uh based on our November, December, we project about thirty five to forty percent of our winter maintenance budget to be spent in the, those uh two months. And that'll be, is projecting us to be about four percent over budget in winter maintenance, which equates to about a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Um, the other divisions are supporting surpluses about of a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And overall, that puts us in the two hundred and sixty four thousand dollar deficit that you see within the attachments in the report. Um, just to highlight back into the capital side of things. We're about to spend about seventy four percent of our capital budget, or about ten point seven million dollars. Uh, the notable delays are the campus renovation, as well as some delays in the supply of fleet. To note as well, uh, there is uh some highlights is the road and bridge projects are scheduled to be under a budget by, uh, about a million dollars. Uh, if there's any additional questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thanks, Corey. Any questions on the report? Seeing no questions, we have a motion that council receives the quarter three variance and year end projections financial results report. Moved by. Counselor Acheson, second by Counselor McDermott. All those in favor? Thanks, Corey. Okay, we're going to move on to corporate services. Annette, the floor is yours.
Uh, good morning. This report provides an update on activities uh within corporate services for the month of October. Uh, but first, not in the report, yesterday was G I S day. And to celebrate, Perth County's G I S team launched a new weather infomap. So it's a desk, desktop application, which provides residents with a focused view of weather alerts in the area as well as forecasted precipitation. So I encourage you to take a look at that. And then a few brief highlights from the report. October was cybersecurity month and I T rolled out a new cyber awareness training course for all of staff. I T also updated the web browser security settings with additional cyber safety initiatives uh still to come. For archives, the Stratford District Historical Society um had volunteers that filmed interviews at archives for a short documentary. Uh, about the first county archivist, James Anderson. So we look forward to seeing that documentary once it's complete. We don't have an estimated timeframe because it is volunteers who are working on that project. Uh, for P O A, uh, a letter was sent to the attorney general as well as our M P. Requesting action be taken regarding the court closures as per council direction. Uh, and the request for a delegation at Roma uh on this particular issue will also be submitted. The deadline to submit is Monday. And we will submit a delegation, a request for a delegation for school bus armed cameras as well. Uh, for legislative services, Perth Municipal Day took place yesterday. The theme was climate change. Thank you to um to staff and to all who attended and participated. It was excellent. Finance is working on the twenty twenty four budget and the audited financial statements for twenty twenty two should be coming to council. At the next. Uh, the R F P for insurance has closed and the county received two tenders and two vendors also submitted notices of no bid. So the responses will be reviewed and assessed together with the consultant Dave Rickley of Program Insurance Brokers. And staffer meeting with Mr. Rickley, who has prepared a comparison chart for our consideration. So subject to any questions, that's just a very quick overview of uh of a few key activities.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Counselor McDermott?
Uh, another question, I was at the archives, I believe, the Saturday before, remember, stay in, they ran a program there, uh, they had a fellow from Stratford talk about the uh. History of the Perth Regiment and it was very well attended and it was a very good thing, so I congratulate them.
Okay, Counselor Smith?
Yeah, thanks, and I am attending Roma, so if there's any, if we do get accepted for any delegations, I'd be willing to sit in. Uh, just let me know.
Okay, any other questions, comments? If not, we have a motion that council receives corporate services of October twenty twenty three update report. Moved by Counselor Trenkowski, second by Counselor Kassenberg. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, now we're going to move to next generation nine one one authority service agreement. And we have Steve with us this morning, so. Morning, Steve. The floor is yours.
Morning, warden, members of council. So this report provides an update on the county's activities in preparation for this mandated update, the current nine one ones. Part of the initiative, the C R T C requires all telecommunications providers upgrade their existing nine one one networks. In order to support the next version of nine one one services referred to as next generation nine one one, or N G nine one one for short. The new N G nine one one system will replace the previous version that was based primarily on older analog landline technologies. N G nine one one will improve public emergency communication services in a growing wireless mobile society. Enabling the public to transmit additional information during nine one one calls, including text, images and video. In Perth County, Bell Canada provides the dedicated network required to deliver nine one one emergency calls. So a new mandatory agreement is required between the county and Bell Canada. To enable access and the transition to the new Bell N G nine one one network and to comply with the C R T C mandated timelines. So in October twenty twenty three, the Director of Corporate Services executed next generation nine one one authority service agreement with Bell Canada. New agreement is for an initial term of ten years and includes no additional fees for the provision of the new N G nine one one service. Are there any questions?
Okay, questions? Counselor McDermott?
Um, when uh, if you used a landline, they'd be able to tell you where you were, right? So if you use a cellphone now, will they be able to tell where that cellphone is?
That's part of the system, so it's gonna start to use more geographical information like your latitude and longitude as it, as it from this, the phone position. Okay.
Provided the phone is charged and turned on.
True, yeah.
Just so you know.
Other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion that council receives the next generation nine one one authority service agreement with Bell Canada report. Moved by Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor Acheson. All those in favor? Carried. Thanks, Steve. Going to move to Public Works Major Facility Projects. John?
Hey, warden Egits, good morning, council. Uh, I'm pleased to announce we have an operational elevator in the courthouse. Uh, T S S A certified that on November first. And as you all know, the project started in, in May twenty of twenty two. To provide central access. To all levels of the courthouse and also included the addition of a universal, universal accessible washroom on the second level. Renovations to the boardroom on the first level and reworking the hallway and washrooms on the third level. Elgin Contracting and Restoration Limited was awarded the construction contract. At a cost of one million eighty five thousand. Which included a hundred thousand dollar contingency. We are now in the project closeout phase and we anticipate that the hundred thousand contingency allowance will be fully utilized. There were approximately thirty change orders contemplated throughout the project. And there were no major issues encountered, encountered, even though we are dealing with a hundred and thirty five year old building. The most significant impact of the project was the timeline. And it took eighteen months to complete and the construction schedule is halted on many occasions to accommodate superior. And provincial offenses court schedules. We'd originally budgeted one point five million for this project. And once we considered design and project management costs, staff expect the project to be on target. Work on the five here on Reno and Link Edition is progressing quite well with an anticipated project completion date of July of twenty twenty four. The report provides some details regarding the work that is being completed to date. And upcoming tasks and milestones. Construction schedule is on target. As of November first, five payment certificates have been issued totaling approximately six hundred and forty three thousand dollars. Of the five million dollar construction contract. Now, that contract included a two hundred thousand dollar contingency allowance. And to date, we have approved thirteen change orders totaling approximately eighty thousand dollars, or forty percent of the contingency. There are a couple of change orders and issues pending uh that are critical and necessary for this project. But could significantly impact the contingency allowance. Staff are highlighting this for council to make you aware. Uh, that we could be halfway through this project and all of the contingency allowance uh allocated. There are pictures of both projects included in the report, so that you can see some of the progress and work completed to date. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any customs for John? Counselor Trenkowski?
Oh, thanks, warden, through you. Um, John, as the. The question is, as the work progresses. And you're dealing with the change orders, I am guessing that. The onsite representatives for the county, as well as the contractor are heavily engaged in daily work records to reconcile those. Not only the, the work done, but to reconcile the value of the work done?
Cor- correct, uh, yes, there is a process that we receive where uh there's either a request for information or. Complicated change order for, for the work being done and is reviewed by design consultants, county staff. Uh, and, and provided by the council.
Thank you.
Counselor Kassenberg?
Uh, do you have a, a process or a, a approach to this such that when we hit eighty percent or some? Number like that for the contingency, we may be back to this council for a request for additional allocation.
Through the warden, I'm not aware of that. Um, I might point out, as you noted in the elevator project, we had a one. Just over one million dollar project and we had a hundred thousand dollar contingency. Uh, when the five here on project was initially uh estimated or budgeted for, it was just over two million dollars. Uh, however. We, and we did have a two hundred thousand dollar contingency at that point in time. Uh, we did not increase the contingency allowance when we went up to tender. And are now sitting with the five million dollar project and a two hundred thousand dollar contingency, so. Uh, you can look at it that way. Uh, we likely did not include that contingency allowance for the project.
Okay, John, just, just sort of a supplemental question, and an obvious one is then should this council not? Be aware and be involved as the approval authority for additional contingency in the project?
What's councilist, Lori?
Um, through the warden, yes, John would come back at a certain point to say we're getting close to the end and seek approval. Um, that a hundred percent is council's authority to give us approval to up the contingency at the appropriate time.
That's why I was asking if there's a threshold at which point that's true.
Through the warden, we don't have a set uh threshold, but that is something that we can discuss and come back and inform council what that would be. What it would be reasonable to be your industry standard. We haven't had that. In all fairness, we haven't had that issue um that I'm aware at the county since I've been here. I don't know in when you built this building, if there was a threshold that was used. And it's a different, this is a greenfield build, whereas the um. Former five here on connecting to our uh historic building is completely different in terms of. What you may find in construction.
I guess if I might just sort of. Add the punchline, it might be why it's worse because they're having.
Counselor Trenkowski?
Um, thanks, warden. I guess further to C A, well, C A O Wolf's comments. Rehab, from my own, my own construction experience, rehab jobs are atypical. You find a lot of unknowns and typically, in the case of a building. The unknowns are buried underground and you can't see them. But think if I read the report correctly, John, you're, you're up out of the ground. And you're into work that you can see, so there is some. Hope that the can. The majority of your contingency items have been dealt with. It should be smoother. Smoother sailing from the contingency aspect as you. Go deeper into the work. That's, that's my general, general impression.
Uh, through the warden, Counselor Trenkowski is correct. Uh, for the most part, we've completed the excavation work, certainly for the link addition. Uh, however, there is still further excavation for walkways and, and retaining walls and things like that, so. We haven't completely completed the excavation work, but. He's certainly correct that most of uh, most of the unknowns that we have encountered are underground. You know, we still, one of the biggest things is we're still s- uh, dealing with some site services like sanitary and storm on site that have been. Found to be uh disconnected, plugged, and in some cases, broken.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Not, then we have a motion that council receives the major facility project November update report. Moved by Counselor Trenkowski, second by Counselor Orr. All in favor? Okay, council reports, anyone have? Any council reports? No? Okay, then we're going to move to bylaws. We have three different bylaws. The first one has to do with O P A two sixteen Trident, so that bylaw. Thirty nine forty nine dash twenty twenty three, we read a first, second and third time and finally passes sixteenth day of November twenty twenty three. Moving to secondary, moved by Counselor Kassenberg, second by Counselor Acheson. All in favor? Carried. And the second one is to do with the emergency management program and. Response plan and that. Says that thirty nine fifty dash twenty twenty three repel bylaw thirty eight seven dash twenty eighteen. Emergency management program, the emergency response plan and that bylaw thirty fifty dash twenty twenty three. You read a first, second and third time and finally passes sixteenth day in November twenty twenty three. Moved by Counselor Smith, second by Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? Carried. And the third one is to do with the forestry conservation bylaw and it's thirty nine fifty one dash twenty twenty three forestry conservation bylaw amendment. And that bylaw thirty nine fifty one dash twenty twenty three, we read a first, second and third time and finally passes sixteenth day in November twenty twenty three. Moving Counselor Kassenberg, second by. By Counselor Orr. All in favor? Carried. Do we have any notice of motions? Other business? Announcements? Counselor Orr?
Uh, thank you to everyone who attended yesterday for the municipal day. Um. John Nader uh mentioned this as well, but um there's going to be some special blood donor clinics. Um, tagging on uh in support of Jim's daughter Kelly. Um, who um is undergoing some um. Treatments for leukemia. So there's a blood donor clinic on. Monday, December eleventh in Saint Mary's. There's only four spots left there. And there's also a second one on Saturday, December ninth in Stratford, and there's fifty six spots there. So I'm encouraging you to gather your people and support Kelly. She's um, she's. She's trying to support the Blood Silvers, Blood Services Clinic on. She's trying to support the Blood Services, Blood Services Clinic on Facebook, and um, if we can help her, that would be great.
Okay, anything else? If not, we do have a need for a closed session, so we have a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Laura for saying that, one of the biggest needs, not only just blood, but it's plasma. Plasma is such a short supply, it's unbelievable, so I'm just bringing that up.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we do have a need for a closed session, so that Perth County Council moved into closed session at approximately ten thirty-one. A M in accordance with section two thirty-nine in the municipal act two thousand and one C dot twenty-five. As amended to consider a matter pertaining to labor reasons, H R, a matter pertaining to labor relations, H R. A matter pertaining to education, C A O, a matter pertaining to labor relations, employee negotiations, E O A. A matter pertaining to potential litigation slash solicitor advice legal, and a matter pertaining to education, employee negotiations. Corporate services. Need a mover and a seconder to go into close, moved by Counselor McDermott, second by? Counselor Smith, all those in favor? We have uh, bylaw three nine five two dash twenty twenty-three, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council, the corporation of the county of Perth. At its regular meeting held November sixteen, twenty twenty-three, and as it ran the first, second, and third time, and passed November sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Moved by Counselor Acheson, second by Counselor Kassenberg, all those in favor? Carried, and the last motion is that council meeting be adjourned at twelve oh four, moved by Counselor Duncan, second by Counselor Smith. All in favor, carried. Thanks, everyone, enjoy the rest of your day.